Okay, I'd like to make a motion to reconvene.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, welcome, folks. We had a 6 o'clock start tonight, and we did that so that we could discuss our Board of Education trustee appointment. So, just a little recap. Peter Henderson resigned. His last day was at the end of November. And we put out a call for applications to have a new appointed trustee. And the appointment process is one where the board gets to decide who will be the next trustee to take over Peter's role. And we put out a call, and we got four fantastic candidates: Wayne Robinson, Laura O'Connell, Laura Hammond, and Camille Linsen. And we did an interview process last Tuesday night, which was open to the public. And we interviewed each of them and got a sense of how they felt about different school philosophies and service on the board and their roles in the community. And then, tonight, we went through a deliberation process that started at 6 o'clock, which was also open to the public. And thankfully, we had a really easy time because we had a unanimous vote, first try, unanimous. And we all selected Laura Hammond to be our next trustee. So, we nominated her and appointed her, and here she sits with us now. So, nothing like just getting started. So, the, all four candidates were fantastic. We thank them for raising their hands. We look forward to working with them in other capacities. And we are really lucky to have Laura join us. She is a longtime community member, has been, you know, she was a Haldane grad, her husband's a Haldane grad. They have Haldane in their blood, deep ties to the community, middle school students, lots of connection to the school in terms of other volunteer service. Laura's also a financial wizard. She, not to put any pressure on you. But has worked for TIA-CREF in the city and now is the president of Skango Woodworking. And so, as you can imagine, being the president of a small business, there's a lot of, lot of things that you do, lots of hats that you wear, and finances are certainly one of them. Negotiations are certainly one of them. So, she has a lot of fantastic skills that I think are really going to be assets to the board. We are really excited to have her join us. And so, she's sitting up here with us. There will be not too much pressure for her to participate too fully tonight, I promise. But we did want to go through the swearing-in process so that you can officially be welcomed. So, Julia Famulara will lead us through.
I'll just ask you to read this. You can read your copy.
Okay.
Now, just have you sign it after you read it. Go ahead.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Trustee of the Board of Education of the Haldane Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yay! So, Laura will be filling the board seat vacancy through our next elections in May. And at that time, if Laura chooses to continue serving, then she will run for election in May. So, yeah.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think I have anything else to say about that except yay! And we have a special presentation tonight, so I will let Dr. Bowers introduce our next presentation.
Okay, so, we're going to ask Michael Tuarte to share some information with us. And I wasn't here for the origin of this, but we, we have been looking at the creation and then the, the production of an energy performance contract. And one of the things that we were promised is a certain amount of savings. So, we are here to share with you whether or not we actually have seen the savings, and it looks like we have. And so, Michael will share with us, because of the changes that were done within the district, how we're in a positive place with electricity. So, please come on up, Mike.
Good evening. Actually, I thought I was here to sing and dance tonight, but I guess I just got voted down on that one. I'm here to talk about the energy performance contract. And like Dr. Bowers, I was not here at the very beginning of it. I was still here at the beginning of it, but not the very beginning. Initially, contracts were signed in October of 2011. So, by the time they really started doing some work, it was the very late part of 2011, going into the beginning of 2012. As everybody knows, we partnered with ConEd Solutions with the Haldane, Haldane School District. And we had 21 measures that we were working on implemented across the campus, which went from, you know, energy savings to also positive environmental impacts and improved comfort. The energy-related savings were things, and I'm not going to go into all of them. I just want to make this as basic as possible. We're like boiler replacement, we had steam trap replacement, control upgrades, lighting upgrades, efficiency motors, and we improved our whole control system. So, now, we can go to night setback and find savings that way. The positive environmental impact and improved comfort came from something that was not helping us save energy. Actually, we probably generated a little bit more energy usage from this, was with, mainly with the ERU unit, which is our Energy Recovery Unit, which is over the elementary school. What that does now is introduces fresh air into the elementary wing, and it was all ducted. So, that uses a little bit more fuel and a little bit more electric. But overall, you'll see the numbers that we did save substantially. We broke this down into two categories: oil, oil usage, and electric usage. So, first, I'm going to go to the boiler replacement and the oil usage. Now, they really didn't put any of the boilers in until the spring of 2012. So, I went back the year before that to use that as a little baseline and to show you, compare it. Now, I didn't go with dollars and cents. It's almost impossible to predict the dollars and cents, or even go over the dollars and cents. The fluctuation of oil rates is so extreme, you can't do that. So, I figured the best way to do it was to compare our usage from year to year, but also with the usage from year to year, you can't compare a cold winter with a warm winter. So, I accumulated all the heating degree, degree days for those years and compared them. So, let's just look at the first year before the new boilers were put in. We used 4,605.28 gallons, but it was a very warm winter. It was 3,261 degree days. So, that's our baseline. The next year was actually over 37% colder. Now, we had 4,487 degree days. But with that being said, we used 17.02 percent, I'm sorry, we used, it was a 37% difference in heating degree days, but we still used 2.73% less oil. So, it was a lot, lot colder, and we still used less oil in 2012-13 year. The boilers were all in at this point. So, you figure from 2012-2013 on, we should kind of like even out there. So, now, we're going to compare the next couple of years and just show where we made just a couple more improvements within-house.
What's HDD again?
Heating degree days. That's what the, I'm sorry.
So, if there's 365 days in a year, how can they be?
Well, it's, it's calculated by the fuel companies on how much fuel oil is supposed to be used on a cold day as compared to a warm day. Any degree under 65 degrees, I believe is considered a degree day.
Couldn't the number be under 365?
No, not at all. You could have 60, 70 degree days in one day. I mean, maybe not that many, but you could have a lot.
Each day is a certain number.
I believe it said each day, it's the num-
Each day has a number.
Yeah, each day has a number, and the number is how many degrees below that set point it is.
That's correct. The set point is 65, and let's say it's 30 degrees. That's 35 degree days for that day. And that's how all fuel companies determine when they're going to deliver your oil.
Got it. Okay.
So, in other words, the higher the degree days, the colder the year is. So, that's significant. That's 37% colder than the year before. So, now, we're at 2012 and '13. That's the first year that we did have the, all the boilers in new, new use at Mabel Merritt and also down here at the main building. We also put in other controls that helped the high school, too, like we had boiler controls enacted. So, now, they're self-calibrating, and they cycle better. We also had burner fuel catalysts, so now, it's, the fuel's used more efficiently. And we have variable frequency drives, so now, it's more of an on-demand type of heating, and it's not all coming out at once. So, as I said, that we, we used, it was 37% colder, and we still used 2.73% less fuel. So, after 2012-13, everything should pretty much now level out, considering if everything else, heating degree days is equal. The next two years, we got hammered. There were very high heating degree days. 13-14 and 14-15 were both over 5,000. They were both very similar. So, if you look at 2013 and '14, it was 14% more heating degree days in the year before, and we used approximately 15% more oil. So, it's pretty much almost the same from the year before. Now, in 2014 and '15, which is very comparable to 13-14, we use less, we use less fuel oil. And that is because in-house, where we've started changing some of the valves over, which wasn't part of the, the performance contract. And now, we're down to like, we have one more valve that we have to replace, and then we're there. So, we should still realize a couple more dollars or gallons in savings. Okay? Now, I'm going to go on to the second part, which would be electric. And I know I call the lighting upgrades, but some of it is at electric. Okay, what I mean, it was more than just lighting, is we put energy-efficient motors in the univents that are here. So, now, they're running a lot more efficiently. We have some of them running slower, and we can make them run slower, faster, higher, depending on the comfort of the room for the people. We replaced three and four bulb fixtures with now just two lamp fixtures, and they're only 28 watts per fixture. And then, they have reflective shields to give off more, more light. We also put energy-efficient ballasts in there to help with electric. Now, again, with this, I went back to a year, went before they did any of the improvements, which is 2000, 2010, 2011. And that year, we used 751,000 kilowatt-hours. Again, I didn't reflect on dollars because dollars is changing so much with the kilowatt-hours also. So, I'm just going by usage with this. So, as you see, they started working on, in 2012, the end of 2011, beginning of 2012, with a lot of the lights. So, the very first year, already, we're down to 719,000 kilowatt-hours. That's a significant decrease. By the end of 2012, or actually, by the summer of 2012, they finished all the electric upgrades. And you could just see the way the graph works. It's beautiful. 2012, 2013, now, we're down to 696,000 kilowatt-hours. 2013-14, we're even lower. We were down to 679,000 kilowatt-hours. And then, you know, once 14-15 came, we even learned the new computer system a little bit better, and we're putting our night setbacks on a little earlier. In other words, the building's not, I started putting the building in unoccupied maybe an hour earlier. So, now, all these univent motors are not running. So, you could see even in the last year, we dropped that much more electric. See how much the graph, you can see there. So, now, we're at 669,000 kilowatt-hours, and that's going to drop significantly now with our solar. So, that's in a nutshell. I didn't want to bore you with a whole lot of numbers and a whole lot of mechanical stuff. I just thought everybody would want to see the numbers. And it shows that we're on the right path, and we're doing really well with the project.
So, we are realizing the savings that we thought we would realize, and we're very happy about that.
So, Mike, this is, great. Totally fantastic. I'm wondering if there's more to come. Like, is this as good as it gets, or are there other things up your sleeve to?
No, no, there's definitely things I need to tighten up with. Like I said, the valves thing is, was really big. Two years ago, I don't think Dr. Bowers was here at that point, but probably a lot of people here know that they can come in in the middle of the winter, and a lot of windows were open and in a lot of the classrooms. And we're heating the building, but the windows were open. And that was because these valves were not, they were not functioning anymore. And when they fall, they fall to open, so the rooms were getting overheated. So, one by one, we did change them. That was not part of the, the energy performance contract. That was all done in-house by our maintenance guys. And we're just about finished with that part, but I'm always going to have these new valves on hand. We're going to have five or six in case a room does go down. I could see it on the computer right away if it's discharging too high hot air. I think I could do a little bit better on the controls in the building, maybe put some of the times a little bit less usage. The solar's going to help, and we're going to be looking into things like turbines and stuff like that.
Great.
I think it's, the outlook is good. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I think there's some more board questions, and then we'll just open it.
Just this is a good comment. One of the things I find really gratifying is, you know, there was this, this energy performance plan or contract, but that, that's not where we stopped. It really sounds like on an ongoing basis, you're really paying attention to see like, you know, where can we do this and where can we do that? And so, it's not just like it was this, this one plan, but it really makes clear this ongoing effort that the district has to, to really be responsible in our use of energy and importantly, economical.
Yeah. Are there other, any questions from the public while we're on the, on the topic? Questions or comments?
How many kilowatt-hours is the solar installation spectrum generating?
Could you just repeat his question, too, because the camera?
I believe, let me see, what's 60?
So, Mike, just repeat his question for the, for the at-home audience.
Oh, the gentleman wanted to know how many kilowatt-hours our solar is going to generate, and I'm trying. Help me out with the numbers, Jan. What's 60% of 600,000? About 60% of 600,000, so.
Three hundred and sixty.
Excuse me?
Here we go.
About 60% of 600,000 kilowatt-hours. I guess I should probably know the number off the top of my head.
36,000.
I guess that's what, about, it's going to save us?
36,000.
Right, 36,000.
There you go. One of our students comes to the rescue.
Okay.
Oh, you were telling.
Okay.
Good. Any, any other thoughts, questions, comments from the, yeah, keep going.
Is there an opportunity to purchase renewable electricity, put rest for the remainder, or perhaps it's already being done for some of it?
Excuse me, I don't understand the question.
For the other 40%?
Yeah, but after the solar kicks in, we'll have, let's see, my math, 240,000 approximately.
This math's better than mine.
Is there, is there a way, are we looking at using renewable energy for that, either, you know, solar outside or wind or something?
We will look at it. We're going to be looking at the turbines, for example. I mean, the turbines for, to generate from the wind. We're going to be looking at that.
So, this is the perfect place to do that with wind energy, but we would have to see if, what, what we can do and what we can't do. There's safety regulations that come with wind turbines. It would probably be the smaller ones that normally would heat or electric a house as opposed to some of the bigger ones. But it has to be gated in, and there has to be a number of safety precautions. So, yes, it's possible.
I guess I wasn't thinking of installing it ourselves, but purchasing it from a third-party utility.
Yeah, that's, that's something that's been suggested to look in also. Right.
Well, one of the things we have talked about is doing it ourselves. So, it's also an instructional tool for our students. And so, the, the solar will be, and we were looking at other green energy sources.
Another thing, just to reduce some energy usage, we're also looking, maybe for the future, looking at the green roofs, which would reduce our energy costs in the winter by 10%. It would save 90% of stormwater runoff, and it would keep the building a lot cooler also in the summer. So, those are things we are looking into.
Yeah, it sounds to me like the solar project was this, was this big project. It took longer than we thought. But now that that's over with, and it's, well, it's just beginning, really. But now that that's complete and it's in motion, it kind of opens up everyone's eyes, I think, to what's possible. And it opens up a little space, too, right? It's like, finally, that's done. Now, let's look at what else can be done.
Right.
Right. Okay, thanks, Mike.
And I'd just like to thank Ann Dineo for all her help with this presentation. Thank you, Ann.
Thanks, Ann. Okay, we're going to move into the superintendent's report.
Okay, well, actually, the first and the second subjects that we're going to talk about, we're going to combine them because there's a lot of moving parts that seem to be interrelated right now that, that we're dealing with. And the last couple of weeks has actually been a very historic period of time for education. And it's been historic not only on the federal level, but on the state level. So, for those of you who have been following what's been happening, basically, No Child Left Behind no longer exists, and it's something for many years that was part of our instructional and educational lives. And that has changed. At the same time, we also had the task force through New York State that was commissioned by the governor that gave their, the results of their inquiry, and they gave 20 recommendations for the Common Core and for the reform agenda and for some of the changes that we've been dealing with over the last four or five years. And we are seeing a major shift in education in New York State, whether it's the result of the federal or the state level. And we are looking at some of the changes that have been recommended. Today, the Board of Regents chose to postpone or put a moratorium on the use of student scores to, for the APPR, for the teachers, for, now through the year 2020. And so, that means that what was recommended to, to have our teachers be evaluated on the scores of their students, that won't happen right now. And we'll wait until 2019 or 2020 to see if it's reintroduced or not. But that changed with the Board of Regents. A couple of months, a couple of weeks ago, excuse me, Peggy, Peggy Jen and I went to see our region, our local region, and she was telling us many of the things that she anticipated would occur, and the APPR and the shift in using student scores was one of them. Also, what she talked about was, unfortunately, that she does not feel the gap elimination adjustment will be returned to the districts this year, despite the fact that we've been hearing for most of the year that we, that we should anticipate having the GEA, the gap elimination adjustment, return to us. And for those of you who don't remember what the GEA is, is basically when the, in 2008, when there was the, the very harsh reality that we were having financial difficulties in New York State, there was a huge gap in education and the funding for education. And New York State said, well, what we will do is we will eliminate the gap by reducing the amount of money we give to districts. And it wasn't new money that was given to districts. It was the money that was actually already there. And each district lost a percentage or a portion of the state aid that they had received the year before and for many years before. And so, when there was a gap, they eliminated it by pushing it onto the districts. We have had a GEA or a gap elimination adjustment every year since, and even when there has been a surplus in state revenues, we still had a GEA. And the question that most districts have been asking through the years is when we're now, we have a surplus, a surplus in state funding, where's the gap? And why is there still a gap elimination adjustment? So, Haldane has still not had full restoration of the GEA, and we anticipated that there would be restoration of the GEA this year. We don't believe that there is going to be, based on what Judas Johnson has told us. And so, we also introduced to the board today a GEA resolution that the Croton-Harmon School District decided to approve for their district, that is, asking the, the state government to please reinstate or restore the GEA to our district and to any district that has not had the GEA restored. What the, the people or the districts that they choose or have already restored are the ones that are considered not as wealthy as the district is, as Haldane is, or for many of the other districts that have not had the GEA restored. Some of the poorer districts have had the full portion of their GEA restored, and now, they're stopping or they're slowing it down despite the fact that we're still in need and as much need as we have been. And from 2009 till today, we're still dealing with the fact that we have a GEA. And so, not only do we not have increases in state aid that are bringing us up to the point that we were in 2008 and 2009, but they're still continuing to pull money from us. So, we have many different things that are happening simultaneously. This is like 15 years of issues that all of a sudden are being put on the front burner and in many cases are going away. A couple of them, we're very happy to see them go because now we can restore the education that we believe our, our children and our students deserve. But the, the one part that we very seriously want to stress the need for is the restoration of the GEA. So, this is something I'm introducing to the board, the board can consider if they would also like to have a resolution, a formal resolution that goes to the state as budget season opens, to ask them to please restore the GEA.
And, and can you tell us the in approximate, approximate numbers where we're at? How much are we still owed?
It's, do I remember mid threes? Is it that?
318,000 last year.
Okay.
And so, if you think about the 318,000 that still exists, and then you multiply it over the many years that that GEA has been in existence, it's far more than 300,000. And so, we have to consider it over the span and the life of the GEA at this point. And it's, it's in the millions. And this is money that has become problematic, and some of the things that we have not been able to do in the district is because the GEA continues to exist. So, that's something we should be considering in this resolution. So, if you have an interest in it, please let me know.
Yeah, I mean, are you, and are you asking the, you're asking the board to create, write their own resolution, or are you asking us to sign kind of what the Croton and Hudson people have done, like as a group, or are you asking us to do it on our own?
Well, the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSIs, the, the group of districts that are part of that, received this as a sample resolution. And you could adopt an identical resolution with it, that obviously, the name's changing. You could create your own, but basically, this is something that has been sent out to all the districts by the Croton-Harmon School District to give support and to really push the idea of a GEA restoration for all districts.
And are you asking for us tonight to kind of, to tell you that, yes, we want to, we want to make a resolution?
That's, that's up to you. If you're ready for it, I would say that probably before the state runs come out, which is normally mid-January, we should have, if you are going to create a resolution for the Haldane School District, it should be done before that. Because once the, the first state aid run comes, comes out, it's pretty much set close to being in, in solid form. If anything, a little bit more would come back, but if there's still a GEA on that, on the state runs, the GEA will be there.
So, can you maybe put together like a draft for us?
Absolutely.
And then, we can like Google Doc it, you know, like we did with the question? You know?
That would be fun.
Can you send it to me since I, yeah?
Oh, yeah, you've created the-
Yeah, I created a special Google Doc so that when the board wants to, wants to work on a document collectively, we can access this shared document using our, our Haldane email addresses rather than our personal email addresses through Google Docs. And so, if you send it to me, I can post it and let everybody- you send it to me, I can post it and let everybody know, and we can look at it that way.
So I will change the name of the district, and if there are any other things you would like to add to it, that would be great. And then we should probably bring it for a vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so again, many different changes happening in the last couple of weeks. So we have also had continued support for our teachers and for our programs within the district. And we had recently, we had a very renowned educator, special educator, come to our district that has many different, many years of working as an administrator and a teacher, and now a consultant for our special education services, Donna Ryder. And she came in to help us do an analysis of our program and see if we have all the components within our special education program that we should, and if there were recommendations that she could make to us for us to look and kind of do a reflective piece on our whole program. We did that on, in the early part of December. She has not yet provided the report to us, but when she does, we will share it with you, and then we'll begin talking about, and if we have anything that we'd like to add, or if we'd like to refine, or if what we're doing is exactly what we choose to do. So that was something that happened in the beginning of the month that was very positive. We also had the completion of our third cohort for our deeper learning, authentic learning experiences, happened yesterday, the third day of the third cohort was finalized yesterday. And so we are continuing to support and to train our teachers in authentic learning, deeper learning experiences, also known as project-based learning. But we are supporting the program to the point that we're no longer just considering it a project-based learning experience, but it is a full learning experience that takes our kids hopefully into a deeper learning type format. Today, we had a talk, a coffee talk with the superintendent on project-based learning, deeper learning, and authentic learning experiences. We had a coffee this morning, and we will have an evening coffee on January the 7th at 6:00. Originally, we were going to have it this evening at 6:00, but we had to postpone it because we had conversations about our board members. So that took precedence. Okay, the last is that we will have the Haldane Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, January 5. And if we are going to have a resolution regarding the GEA, it should be at that time.
I also have on here the New York State Common Core Task Force Analysis and Recommendations.
That was, I kind of put that.
That's just for us to, anybody to look at, right?
It's, right.
We're not ready to.
And the task force, just as, that whole kind of conglomerate of different things that happened, one of them was the recommendations from the Common Core Task Force. And so there were 20 recommendations, they are on Google Docs, we have, the board has copies of that. So if you have an interest to see what the 20 recommendations are, they are there.
Okay, good. We're going to go into the information reports now, so why don't we start with our student representatives?
I'm Avio Platt, as I assume most of you know. I'm the president of the Middle School Student Council, and I have three things I'd like to tell you about from the, since the last meeting that we were either planning on or have done. So the first thing is, we have had, this will be our third annual community book read, which was starting, started by Mr. Harrington when he was the principal in the middle school. And the book is called Because of Mr. Terp. And this is an easy read book for most students, but we chose it because it has a very good message. Well, and the MCIT chose this book out of one of five books that they liked. And it follows seven kids in, who are fifth graders, and their teacher in a setting where, they all have different personalities, but the teacher knows how to like work with all of them. And the read will be on February 24th this year. And this book has a very powerful message, which I recommend you read the book to find out. And tomorrow during school at 7:30, we're having a in-school concert, which is one of the first times it's happened in the middle school for a while. The in-school concert lets the kids who are not involved in the chorus or band to see what the other kids are doing in these classes, and lets the kids show off to their peers all the hard work they've put in from September through December. This also is a very good practice run for the band and the chorus, so that if anything's wrong, they can iron it out Friday and Thursday before they show their parents on Monday night. And then the third thing is, for the sixth grade librarian media class, Ms. O'Rourke came up with a new project that works on the kids reading books and writing reviews about them. So she had the kids imagine that they were book agents writing book reviews, and they were going to evaluate the books based on multiple criteria. And then when they were done writing it, they are going to propose it to Mrs. Sniffin about why this book should be in our library. And one of the things Ms. O'Rourke did to help promote this was, she had an author, Matthew Cox, come in to talk with them. He wrote The Peddler's Road, which is basically a modern-day take on Pied Piper. She also had a publishing agent come in to help talk with them about how books are like published and what they have to do to make sure that they may become successful books. From what I've heard, that most of the sixth graders enjoyed this project because it was something kind of different that I hadn't really done in elementary school. But now in middle school, Ms. O'Rourke is showing them different ways that the library isn't just for reading books, but it also can be to do other things and relates to the real world.
Avio, I just have a question for you, maybe it's for Ms. Sniffin, but the book read, the community book read, I remember last year and the year before that the Butterfield Library got involved and had books available for people to check out, and so other people could get involved without having to buy the book. Is that happening this year? Do we know?
Yes.
We're doing that as well. They'll also be ordering books here for students.
What's the name of that again? Mr. Terp. And Mr. Terp's the teacher in the Platte line. So.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have others, a high school representative? No, no. They're all recovering from the Platte. Okay, Mr. Harrington.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I was asked to comment a little bit in terms of homework and philosophy around homework in the elementary building. And certainly, homework exists, K through 5. Homework, philosophy around homework in the elementary building is really about reinforcement of skills that's happening during the school day. So the expectation is that there is an appropriate math homework that reinforces that day's lesson, certainly in the primary grades. Myself and Ms. Sniffin, in the time that I've been here, have worked really diligently with our staff to really build early literacy skills, so book baggies do begin going home in kindergarten, as Ms. Daly notes.
Makes your deal.
Okay, so there is the expectation that children are reading with their parents from several of those books in the course of an evening. So there's the expectation around reading and numeracy math each and every night. As students move up in grades, there's the expectation around writing and reflecting on the reading that's happening, whether it's a student's independent reading book or a shared text that's happening in class. And the common rule of thumb in terms of the question around how much time should students be spending on homework, we usually use kind of 10 minutes to litmus test, in terms of 10 minutes in kindergarten, additional 10 minutes in first grade and up from there. Okay, so the expectation would be, there really should be no more than 40 minutes of homework by the time students are in fifth grade. Okay?
Can you speak a little bit about, if parents are feeling like there's more than that, what should they do about it?
Well, they should start with asking and communicating with their child's teacher. Okay, so that would be the first place to start. Certainly, I think it's certainly fair to say that there isn't an expectation of students coming home and being inundated with homework, certainly in the elementary level. But it's really about reinforcing skills and building, building readers and building a sense of responsibility, and for students to be able to manage their time and prioritize work after school. So with that said, they should start with a conversation with their child's teacher. If there's still some, some questions that lack some clarity, certainly, they can reach out to me directly, and I can help facilitate that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick plug for tomorrow evening's winter concert, our fifth grade advanced band and fourth and fifth grade choir, 7:00.
Ms. Sniffin?
The same, same thing, was asked to talk a little bit about homework in regards to the middle school. And, you know, middle school is an interesting time period for kids, definitely, in terms of growing and development and independence, things like that. I would reiterate the same thing, we are talking a little bit more in-depth at the team level, at the sixth grade team, seventh grade and eighth grade team, with the teachers, just kind of an overarching philosophy around homework, and spending a lot of time discussing that. I think that there's the same philosophical approach in that approximately 10 minutes per grade level, so as you're in sixth grade, an hour of homework up to eighth grade, you know, an hour and a half. I think what I'm hearing from a lot of the teachers is, you know, some nights there might be 15 minutes of homework to a half an hour of homework, and then other nights, there might be more like two hours, depending of what's going on. So they're really trying to work through that. Having a team philosophy in the middle school helps a lot with that because the teachers can share the different conversations that are going on, or the projects that they're doing. Teachers are starting to use Google Classroom more, so they're starting to see what one another is assigning on different nights. The other piece, I would say, is that we are discussing it at the MCIT committee, we'll be discussing it there, and we've put together a group of students. We started with eighth grade to start analyzing kind of the trends and things that they're, they're talking about. But the philosophy, again, is the same, it's reinforcement, it's practice of skill. There's an expectation that students are reading at night, book of choice. I think you start to see long-term assignments and long-term projects being presented in middle school. If students wait till last minute to do it, it's going to be more work. We are very fortunate in having 10th period in the middle school, which gives students the opportunity to meet with their teachers, to get work done, in a somewhat structured environment. And I think it's important that students start taking advantage of that, and we continue to encourage them to take advantage of that, both from the teacher's side, the administrative side, and from the parent's side. I would reiterate the same thing that Mr. Harrington said, if you are having some concerns specific to one classroom, please reach out to the teacher first. We do, again, have the team structure, so there are team leaders that you could reach out to at each of the grade levels. We also have a guidance office with a guidance counselor to reach out to, and you can always reach out to me as well, and I can help with some of that, too. So hopefully that helps.
Thank you. Mr.?
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to be reporting on two different topics this evening. First and foremost is this same topic of homework. When it came to my attention, and we were kind of specifically asked by the PTA to reflect on the topic a little bit and build it into our dialogue and conversations, the first thing I did was go to our class parents group and had them kind of reflect over the years on their experiences with homework in the high school. And for the most part, by and large, you know, folks across the board really felt that, you know, they felt strongly, in a positive way, about the appropriateness of the level of homework. But it varies wildly across different courses as it should in the high school, whether it's subject matter, or whether it's an honors or an AP course. There were some other more constructive pieces of criticism relative to summer assignments and some of the AP long-term assignments. But I promise that we would keep those, that is a separate kind of conversation and a future conversation with the class parents, especially this spring as we start getting towards our summer assignments for next year. But by and large, our parents were very supportive, but we did agree collectively that it might be helpful to craft a philosophy statement around homework for the school, not a policy, because very consciously, a policy wouldn't be appropriate because it varies between courses and levels. But a philosophy statement. And at this month's department chair meeting, we began to kind of pool our brains around that idea, and the department chairs were very receptive to that and have already begun to craft some language around that. Following the lead of the middle school, actually, it's their kind of draft that inspired our conversation with the department chairs. So I'm pleased where that's going, and I think it'll be a very positive, productive thing for everybody going forward, especially for students, for students to be able to kind of reflect and turn to a blanket statement that captures a philosophy. The way I was kind of thinking about it today is that, you know, imagine a student really in the doldrums and the depths of despair around assignment and thinking, what am I doing this for, right? Just turn to the philosophy statement and then reflect on the real, true meaning and purpose behind what they might be doing. And it can kind of help them kind of reflect and find inspiration in what it is that they're doing. Similarly, to teachers, to hold ourselves accountable to a real reason and a rationale for what it is that we're doing and asking our kids to do on a daily basis. So positive progress there. Forgive me for a second while I pull up my notes, I just don't want to get this wrong. Yeah, and the second thing I want to report apart, report on is a very important accolade for Lucy Austin. She was named, she received an award for the National Young Arts Foundation, the National Young Arts Foundation Awards, honorable mention for theater. It's a first-time Haldane recipient for this type of award. It's a pretty extensive application and audition process. We're excited that other future Haldane students might pursue this. A few things happened, you know, I kind of equate it to the National Merit Scholarship for the arts, really, is kind of how I'm framing it. But really, there is a financial award involved, there's great recognition for the school. As a school, we go on a national list or registry with this organization. And then the third thing is that the student gets to spend a week in master classes, which could be, you know, folks as accomplished as someone like Yo-Yo Ma has done it in the past, Mikhail Berishnikov is very likely the person that Lucy will get to work with. It's a pretty impressive feat. So congratulations to Lucy Austin.
Great, thank you. Ms. Hackett?
Hi, good evening. So I just want to add to Dr. Bauer's report, she talked a lot about a lot of the professional development that we've been doing in the district lately. And we had another group came, come to us, Goldman Sore and Rutherford came from New York City to work with about 25 of our staff members earlier this month and at the end of November. And it was really about multisensory lessons, differentiation of instruction in our classrooms, co-teaching models, and also interventions and strategies. So the teachers really were very receptive to this, and we hope it's just the start of a new beginning where we're going to form a relationship and possibly do some co-teaching and more additional work with other school districts and partner with them, so they could actually come in and maybe do some coaching, or we can go there and view the coaching going on in their classrooms. And additionally, the occupational therapist Mercedes Burke and I are looking to put together some toolkits for all the special educators and possibly for the building levels as well, with some resources, materials, and supplies that would be helpful in the classrooms in doing differentiation. So we're really excited about it, and we're looking to have the cool toolkits ready for February or March to kind of roll that out as a project that our department's working on.
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks. Mr. Solomon?
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to give a brief update on our winter sports. Our boys and girls basketball teams are off to great starts. Our varsity track team had their first meet last weekend and did very well. And our hockey team, where we merged with Hendrick Hudson, is also off to a great start. So the winter sports are underway. But I'd also like to reflect on our fall season briefly. Recently, we had five out of our six fall teams recognized as scholar-athlete teams. And for those of you that are unaware of what a scholar-athlete team is, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association has certain academic requirements by sport, and they dedicate a certain amount of athletes per team that need to maintain a 90 GPA or higher. So five of our teams were recognized, and I'd just like to congratulate them. And they were our varsity boy soccer team, our varsity girl soccer team, our boys cross-country team, our girls cross-country team, and our volleyball team. So as a student athlete, grades always come first, and our students are doing a great job of being students first. So we're excelling in the classroom and on the field. So we're excelling in the classroom and on the field, and as an athletic director, I'm extremely proud, and I'm looking forward to how the rest of our teams do going forward. And with that said, out of the 97 varsity athletes we had in the fall, 53 of them had a 90 GPA or higher, which is 55 percent. So continue to work hard, continue to do excellent in the classroom, just great job, everyone, so, thank you.
And just talk about Monolith, again, real quick, that's our solar project, it is now, physical part of it is all done, we are officially online with all three buildings. We can go online and actually see the kilowatt hours that we're producing every day, see how much we produce since the beginning of the project. And I say that the physical part of it and the mechanical part is over, but now is gonna become the time when representatives from Monolith will be coming down into the classroom to meeting with teachers and whoever requests it for the educational aspects of it, and this will be from kindergarten through 12th grade. It's also that time of year where I wanna thank my custodial and maintenance staff, they, you know, right now, there's a lot of setups with plays and Christmas concerts or holiday concerts and musical rehearsals and everything, put the bleachers up, put them down, not the bleachers, the risers, put them up, take them down between classes, put them back up again. So they all do a lot of work, and I'd like to thank all of them. Thanks, guys, and girls.
Can I ask you just to do a quick kind of summary about the white ash in the children's gardens?
Oh, yes. We have two trees that are on the south end of the elementary school, they're both ashes, and there's a really, really, really big one, and there's another big one, but it's not quite as big. We had an arborist come in to give us recommendations on what to do. The one that needs to come down pretty quickly, and it's going to over the Christmas break, holiday break, it'll be the one that's a little bit more to the west than the other one. And we're gonna be taking that down, and the other tree is gonna need to be pruned and cabled, and that one eventually will be coming down, too, I don't know, four, five years, I'm not gonna even give a number, I don't know. But it has to be cabled and dead pruned, 'cause that one is also deteriorating.
And one of the things that our garden committee has asked for is for us to retain some of the wood and create kind of a series of benches and an area for students to sit in, to work together, using the wood from the tree, so.
I think it would be easier for him to do with the bigger ash.
It probably would, but we're not putting that, taking that one down quite yet.
That's right.
But there's quite, there'll be some limbs that will be coming down and some areas that need to be reinforced, and we'll do that.
And Michael, you said that you can now see the solar, like, what we're producing online, is that online for the public yet, or not, not quite?
Yes. It, the web, first, you have to go to Locust, L-O-C-U-S-T, energy.com, that's their website. And then if you wanna see the high school, it's, the password, not the password, the login name has to be a email address, so it's just called Haldane, oh, I'm sorry, high school, all one word, at haldaneschool.org. And the password is solar in small letters, S-O-L-A-R, 21, the numbers, all, again, one word. Now, for the Bus Garage District Office, it is busgarage@haldaneschool.org, password is solar21 again. And for this building, it is elementary, comma, middle, at haldaneschool.org, and the same password is solar21. And if anybody has a problem with it, please call me up.
And we talked about maybe just linking, is there like an easy link we could do on our website or something?
We'll have to check.
We'll have to figure that out.
Leah and I are actually working on it.
You're working on that, yeah.
Yes.
Locust, L-O-C-U-S-T, energy.com?
Yes.
Okay, so hopefully, an easier way for everyone to see it is on its way.
Right.
Great, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board or from the public, any information reports? Okay, so if anybody wants to skedaddle, now's a good time, we won't notice. We're gonna go into committee minutes.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Not that the next part isn't riveting, I'm just offering. Okay, so Haldane Arts Booster Club minutes, we're just accepting them, the Booster Club does an amazing job, they did a fantastic job at the play this weekend, I think a lot of us had the opportunity to see it. And congratulations to our students and everybody who worked on the play. And the next one's, like, I feel like it's already in motion, I think they're already in rehearsals for it, it's like, they're just start, they start, they go for the next one, and I'm sure they're knee-deep in concerts right now as well. So thank you to the Haldane Arts Booster Club for all that you guys do. Is there any communication from the public? Okay, consent agenda minutes, may I have a motion, please?
Second?
We are discussing the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on December 1st and December 8th, 2015, is there, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good. I'm gonna pause for a moment before we go into unfinished business, so the shape, the tape can be changed. Oh, we have three whole minutes, okay, never mind. Appointment of trustee, well, we've done that. That's already done, the appointment of Ms. Laura Hammond. So we're gonna move into the approval of the resolution, the sale of the district-owned property on Cedar Street. And we tabled this on December 1st because the board had some more questions about the contract. But just for the public, let's just do a little recap. So this is what is commonly known as the James Pond Property. It was originally put on the market for 425, that was what we needed in order to make our Play Haldane project budget-neutral, it was part of that process. And I asked Ann to just explain why we had originally said we needed 425, but we're actually going to be selling it at 415, and that's okay, and she's going to tell us why.
Okay. At the time of the referendum in 2012, the debt service production, projection indicated that $425,000 was the price that we needed to keep the field project budget-neutral, so that there was no, you know, net charge to the taxpayer at the end, taking into account state aid, the donations that were taken in, and the sale of the property. Now, after three years, we've enjoyed low interest rates on our bond anticipation notes, and as we get closer to bonding the debt, because of the reduced debt service, $415,000 is the amount that would be needed from the sale of the property to keep the project still neutral to the taxpayers.
Right, so the price is different than was originally advertised, but it still does the same thing, it still makes our Play Haldane project budget-neutral. So the details for the public is that we are selling it at 415, and we are selling the property to two different people who are gonna be building homes on it, it'll be residential properties. And they're dividing the property into three different lots. So lot one is somebody's house, lot two is somebody's house, and lot three is the James Pond property, which will be retained by the school. So the school will retain ownership of the property that we typically use with the students. The other owners of the new residential lots will have access to the James Pond property for, I don't know, for leisure, as well as in case they needed to use it for access points or something, shipping, a delivery, or something, to their property. Am I missing anything? Are those the nuts and bolts?
Well, I mean, I remember, it was earlier this year, so the whole thing, I guess the point I wanna make is that I, it's just to communicate the work that the board did, I think, to get to where we are with this deal and to keep retaining James Pond. So I would just like to point out for people that didn't know, that the original lot that was for sale when we first got the offer included James Pond, and one of the things, I think, that was communicated, please correct me if I'm wrong, to potential buyers, was that they would own James Pond, but we would retain access rights. When this offer came, we looked at it, we made the suggestion of actually splitting the property somewhat differently, not selling that entire parcel, but in fact, retaining for our own usage, not just access rights, but retaining that rights, retaining that property, and therefore reducing the amount of land that was actually being sold to the buyers. And I guess also, really, my understanding, I wasn't at this meeting, but I remember you talking about, you know, your meeting with them and communicating really very clearly to them that the district needed to sell this property for $415,000, it was part of the field, the budget resolution, I'm not remembering all the words exactly, and I guess I'm sort of patting ourselves on the back, but also, I mean, I think, and also the buyers, I mean, the buyers, I think, came in and really understood that the James Pond was important to the district and, and worked with us to get to something that we needed. I mean, so I think that the board and the district has done everything the public wanted us to do with this sale of this.
Good, so is there anything else anyone wants to kind of share about the sale? I feel like Peggy said it all, we are really happy to...
This is great.
To get this wrapped up, we are really happy with the deal, it did exactly what the district needed it to do, we are happy to have new neighbors, they're gonna be great new neighbors, and we're happy that our students can still use James Pond as they'd like to. So I'm going to make a motion to go through the approval of the resolution. So here I am, making a motion. And I'll have Julia read the resolution.
The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the following resolution, whereas the voters of the Haldane Central School District have previously authorized the Board of Education of the Haldane Central School District to sell district-owned real property located at the Cedar Street Extension, Cold Spring, New York, hereinafter referred to as the premises, and whereas the Board of Education has located a potential buyer of the premises and has negotiated terms of such sale that are acceptable to the board, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education does, subject to satisfaction of any applicable secret requirements, hereby approve the terms of the contract of sale and the buyer's rider relating to the sale by the district of the premises, copies of which shall be incorporated by reference in the minutes of this meeting, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education does hereby authorize the Board of Education President to execute the contract of sale, the buyer's rider, and any additional documents that may be necessary to complete the sale described herein.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Is there any communication from the public at this time?
I'm just curious, I thought that, I'm glad that the district...
So Aaron, I let it slide before, but really, you're supposed to come to the microphone for comments, and it's just, it's just so that the at-home people can hear you.
I'm glad that the district is maintaining ownership of the James Pond section, my understanding was that that was a legal requirement, based on the previous lawsuit. Is that not the case? I'm just curious for my own knowledge.
Our understanding, and as we've been, you know, reviewing this repeatedly and going back to the original documents, when this happened, was that the district had to retain the rights to the pond and that the pond would not be developed, but it wasn't that the, that the district had to keep, maintain ownership of the pond, and so it was part of, it was, when it went up for sale, the pond was part of the lot, and when they came to us, we made this recommendation of thinking about dividing the property into the three lots somewhat differently, so the way it was listed, there were three lots sort of drawn on the survey map, and we made the recommendation of redrawing those lines so that the pond would stay. Actually, I think it went back and forth, I mean, it wasn't like it was just our idea, it was part of also, I think, what the, what the potential owners said as well, but, but no.
We always had to have access to it.
Access, but not ownership.
But we didn't always have to have ownership of it.
Does the, does the new ownership, does their access to it for transporting things require them to preserve the pond as it is now?
Yeah, and that's actually on all of our, on all of us, like, we actually are also obligated to make sure that we preserve the pond, because we can't, I don't know, develop a gas station right there, right? They wouldn't like that. So we have, it's on both of us, we have to preserve the pond, but they, they have to use the property respectfully as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going into new business, the Board of Education Mid-Area Retreat. So this is something that we were talking, Diana, Peggy and I were talking about, actually, I don't know, maybe it was just Diana and I, but we were talking about it as, you know, we have a lot of things that we need to check in with this year. Specifically, we have an interim PPS director, we have a interim situation with our, we do not have, we have a tenured elementary school principal, but the separation of the two principalships was kind of a trial, right? So we need to check in with all of that, we need to make sure that's working, as we're expecting it to work. I personally would like to hear from the administrators themselves, to hear how it's going, but because that's kind of personnel stuff, and that's not public meeting stuff, we talked about doing a mini-retreat to check in with them and check in with the administrators and see how things are going.
So what we did last year for our mini-retreat is, the day of a board meeting, we would meet in the afternoon, and that would then go from the afternoon into the evening meeting. We have the 19th of January, although we will have a community leaders' meeting between 6:00 and 7:00 on that day, so we could meet early, earlier in the afternoon, have the retreat, the community leaders' meeting, and then come into the evening.
Like a triple threat?
At the risk of being difficult, it's the first day of my new job, is January 19, and I will be, so, and I also have to be in Washington DC for it, so, sorry, but the 19th does not work for me.
Okay. But we need maybe, what, two hours?
Yeah, I would say.
Two hours. Oh, and I'm gonna throw in there, the Leah, the integration, the technology specialist situation, too, I'd like to hear from them, how that's going.
Discover, create, innovate teacher as well.
Thank you. And, okay, so what we, we need to do is, we need to find like a two-hour time slot that we can do this mini-retreat, if it's around a board meeting, fine, if it's not, fine.
Do you like to try the first in February, the first meeting in February? I don't know if that would be problematic. If you wanna link it to.
Like a 5:00, like a 5 to 7?
Yeah.
All right, can everyone just check their calendars, maybe we'll confirm, so we're talking about the first February, what is that, February? Is it actually February 1st?
No, February 2nd.
February 2nd? February 2nd, having a 5:00 start, 5:00 to 7:00 PM mini-retreat to discuss personnel issues, that's not the right term, though.
The employment history of particular individuals.
No, it's something else. The employment history of particular individuals. So we'll just confirm, maybe via email, if everyone can just check that out. If it's not gonna work, we'll find another time.
So if we're talking February 2nd, at 5:00 PM?
Yep, February 2nd, 5:00 PM. Was there anything else we needed to do? That was the main topic at that mini-retreat, right?
We also usually do a, so maybe for February 16th, where we meet with the administrators to discuss the teachers that are up for tenure, and then the second-year teachers, the first-year teachers.
Right.
Just go down that.
I feel like I remember doing that in March or something.
Yeah, I don't know if that was February. We'll check.
February and March.
We'll check the dates.
But that's on the upcoming.
Yeah.
And we also talked about doing a mid-year goals check-in.
Yes, that's what I was going to say.
As a board, but that can be done in public.
Right.
Oh, exactly.
Right. So we could even schedule it for that same day, you know, we can talk about it, but it might actually make sense to do it that same day if we, I remember it should be a workshop meeting, not a business meeting. So we'll talk about when we want to do that, but we did talk about wanting to do that sometime in January or February, just to check in and see how our goals are doing and what we need to...
So wait, February 2nd and then February 16th, you said?
I just threw that out as a possible date to meet with the administrators.
Okay, there's no school that day.
Oh, that's right. We moved it.
You're right.
We moved the meeting to the following week, the 20, whatever.
So we're not, we're meeting on the 23rd.
23rd. Right.
Maybe that would be a good date to check in on goals at the workshop meeting. Okay. Okay, good. And then we're moving into the budget season. And what we have here is a draft of, do you guys all have it? We have a draft of a potential schedule. And I think it's based on what we did last year, which I think worked really well. I don't know if anyone has any initial comments about it. It's, you know, we could dissect it more, digest it more. Sometimes things change along the way. Ann, I don't know if you have anything you want to share about it?
No, I set the draft up knowing that, you know, the board was happy with last year's schedule. It was a little bit of a change from what we had done in the past. Certainly, if you have any suggestions, I can make those changes. And the next, next board meeting is also reviewing the draft. This is really the first, the first stab at it, for you to have something to look at.
Great. Any initial questions for Ann on this or our thoughts? Yep. Okay. So we'll continue to look at it and hopefully approve it at our next meeting. And then we talked about our board policy project. So it is the very exciting project of our, of our board to go through the policies, all of them, and see what needs to get updated, changed, added. And we as a group decided to start with the stuff that is most important, meaning policies that we don't have that we're supposed to have, or anything that is imminent that needs to get updated. And we discussed, Diana and I discussed that, you know, we need to form a subcommittee of this so that we're not all looking at every policy all day. And we said that maybe a good suggestion, you guys can see what you think, is that the subcommittee could be Diana and a board member. And you'll go through it and in detail, make suggestions, hash it out, see what you, what everybody thinks, and then bring that to the full board as this is our amended suggestion. What do you guys think? Is there any further comments, or does it look good? And then we can move forward. And that each subcommittee would tackle five policies, and then we'd move on to the next person. So that it wouldn't feel like it's one person's cross to bear for the calendar year, you know? So if we do five policies at a time and then move on to another person, so we can just rotate it through. What do you guys think?
One person and Diana, is that enough different perspectives?
I think so, because it then will be coming to the board.
And it's read twice, right? I mean, with policies, so there's, they're, they're, yeah, that group would do it, they would come to the board, it's read once, it's read a second time, and then voted on. That's what we remember, the health...
Right.
Care one.
Right, right.
So there's plenty of time for the full board to get in comments or suggestions or questions. And the full board will know which policies are working on, so if there's something that, you know, is coming to you that you want to make sure is involved in the conversation with the subcommittee, you can add it in. But if everyone's in agreement, then I think we can start. And it'll work the way it kind of works right now. You saw the, did you have it in here?
We do have the required policies. We have a document that lists all of them.
Oh, here it is, right. And I think she sent us just the, oh, that's not what I was looking at.
No, she's...
What did we get when we saw all, like, the five that we were kind of working on?
She did put those...
Those were somewhere.
Yeah, they're, they're...
Oh, they were in our Friday packet, maybe?
No, I believe that she put them on, and then she, we realized, initially, she put them on. She may have taken them off because we said that's not how we're going, I kind of...
Oh, oh, okay.
...rediscussed the way it was going to happen.
Okay, good.
So, but she, we do have a list of all the required policies, then we have additional policies beyond that.
Right.
But it, she has them divided by the chapter and by the topic, and so that's how we'll start with required policies, and then we'll move into the other ones we have.
Right.
That need updating.
And these policies are coming from Erie Bosse, so it's not like we're crafting them from scratch, obviously.
And there, we have some of these already, and we don't have some of these already.
No, most, the required policies we have, but they could be 10 years old.
Got it, okay.
So, show of hand, does anybody want to volunteer to be the first? Okay, Peggy, we'll...
Let's do it right away, right?
And we'll do it before your first day.
That's what I was thinking. I have two weeks off in January. I am unemployed for two weeks. I'm just going to read those board policies.
I'll follow Peggy.
I like it. I thought I was going to pull some teeth. Okay, so that's good. We'll start with you two, and then we'll take it from there.
You thought nobody was going to want to do this?
No, I mean, we all have to do it, but I thought that maybe there might be a...
Nope.
All right, I'll do it. Okay, so Peggy will start, and Peggy and Diana will be in touch to communicate about setting it up, and then you guys will send it to us.
Great.
Sounds good. Okay. Anything further from the board or from the public about anything?
Happy holidays, happy vacation.
Happy holidays, happy vacation. That's a good thing to say. Yes, the next board meeting, as Diana pointed out, will be in 2016. Okay, then I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.